Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Chair McCoyd.
Here.
Commissioner Osick.
Here.
Commissioner Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook is absent, and Ian Dixon-McDonald will be serving as guest counselor on her behalf. Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Please join in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move to public comment. We have nobody signed up. Is anybody here who would like to address the Housing Authority of the City of Salem? Okay. Moving along to the consent calendar. Vice Chair Lewis.
Yes, I move passage of the consent calendar with one pull, and that is 3.3A by Commissioner Anderson.
Moved by Vice Chair Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Kaser, to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? All those in favor signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And so, we're down to information reports. Andy, you have anything you want to say?
Well, I know that...
Oh, that's right. We've got to go to Ms... I'm sorry. We have to go to Commissioner Anderson.
Well, actually, Special Order of Business is six on this agenda, but I'd be happy to do it. My information report is five, but I don't care. I've got questions.
None of mine. Oh, on mine. Never mind.
I'm looking at the urban renewal.
There we go.
Thank you for pointing that out to me, folks. That'll be the first of many tonight, so let's get rolling here. I've got some questions that I see...
Are you going to make a motion on your...
Oh, I move we receive and accept Salem Housing Authority's independent financial audit report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2017.
Okay. To your motion?
Yeah. I just have some questions. I think this is a great report, but there were some questions, and I sent an email to Director Wilch over the weekend and said, "Here are the questions," and he brought his auditor with him to answer the questions. So, I guess I'll start by the first question I have...
Can I introduce her, Tom?
Yes, please do.
Kalina Plath is our finance manager from the SJA.
Yeah, don't tag me as the auditor.
She's not the auditor.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So, Kalina, here are some questions I have. I'm interested on page five on the financial overview. Your assets exceeded the liabilities by $20 million, and $8 million was unrestricted. So, how do we get the assets exceeding liabilities? I mean, what do you define assets? The physical properties we own and the accounts receivable?
Yes.
Okay. So, that seems like a pretty good jump, because oftentimes, you know, the assets and liabilities equal. So, this is a good thing.
So, if you look at the equity as well, then they'll equal with that.
Okay.
But the way that HUD does accounting with our net position, we do want that to be in a positive.
Okay. And then, on page seven, first paragraph, developer fees earned from related parties was significantly less, and how do you account for that?
So, our developer fees are coming from Robert Lindsey Tower Housing LLC, and each year, that's actually going to decrease until they're paid in full. So, you will see that trend each year. In that first year of completion, we got a larger amount, and then each year, they'll pay us through their cash flow, and it'll go down each month, or, sorry, each year until it ends.
And we also have to earn some of that as well by having the right amount of cash flow and so forth.
Thank you. This may be a question more for the director than one of his subordinates, but on page nine, we're talking about your operating funds are significantly affected by the federal government's annual appropriation from HUD and the HUD money, and we've had these discussions before that there's a potential of a problem of getting money from HUD, and how do you see that trend moving through the next year?
Well, I think, like we always do, we are looking for more money to help our clients...
Andy, using my...
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Like we always do, we're always looking for additional resources to serve our clients, and we are always looking to make sure that we have the ability to withstand HUD oversight and pullback. In the next meeting, I talked a little bit about the rescission that was going on. So, you know, that happens. We're used to that very much.
Okay. So, I think my final question is a series of questions. I'm looking at page 26 and 27, which are notes receivable, and I note that most of those notes receivables call for balloon payments at a certain time. And then, if I look at page 29 through... 29 and 31, those are the notes payable, and most of those notes payables are maybe interest-only or maybe no interest until it balloons, and the balloons are, seems to me, the year 2044 and the year 2069 are two very popular years there. And so, my question is, I'm sure you have budgeted and anticipate both getting in the balloon payments and making the balloon payments, and is there a correlation between the notes receivable that you expect to get paid in 2044 and the notes payable that you expect to get paid in 2044 and in 2069 on both sides?
Yes.
You have to speak to the microphone. Oh, you are? Okay. I'm sorry. I couldn't see it there.
I got one here. So, on most of those, for the 2044, those are again related to the Robert Lindsey Tower Housing, and with that, two of those are a very large pass-through. It's actually CDBG funds that were loaned to the Housing Authority that we then in turn passed through to that agency, and so they make all of those payments on that one. And I believe that's $1.1 million, and then the almost a quarter million, those two are the CDBG funds, and so those don't have any interest payments due on those, and those are passed through, and they are making payments towards that. For the other payments there, a lot of that had to do with the sale and the acquisition of the tax credit property. So, instead of taking the cash from that, the cash from the sale then went into loans back into the property. We will be receiving some interest payments back on those. Many of those, though, we do not actually expect to receive those balloon payments as we're moving through the 15-year compliance period on the low-income tax credit. A lot of times, what will happen is the other partner in the agency, they will leave, and then those will revert back to us. So, we still hold the deed of trust on those, but we don't anticipate actually receiving all of that payment back in full on that date. And then, the 20... I believe it was the 2069s. Those are the owned properties of Southview Terrace and Inglewood West, and so those are actually the mortgages for the properties, and those are getting paid on a monthly basis, and they're paid out of the revenues from the rent.
So, it's sort of the equivalent of you go buy some furniture, and they say no interest for the first 36 months, and in reality, you're making payments during that time, so you don't have the balloon payment when it comes up.
One of those great things about the tax credit is that the tax credit investors only want it for the first 15 years, and they're willing to give it to us for a dollar. So, then we have assets into the... for a long time.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. You've been very helpful, and sorry you had to come here tonight, but Andy will give you some time off tomorrow or some other time.
I'm good.
I think I just did.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing that we have a motion on the floor to approve the staff recommendation by Counselor Anderson, seconded by... Who was it?
Nanki.
Commissioner Nanki. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes? Anything else you want to talk to us about, Andy?
I do. Thank you. We were notified that the...
The mic, Andy.
We were notified yesterday, day before, that the Fisher Road 4107 property was funded for the lift funds from Oregon Housing, 1.5 millions, and that is the cash that we have estimated will finish out the property construction. So, that's a good news.
Commissioner Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of a presentation that we're going to have here in just a little bit, what kind of communication do we have with all the tenants inside of Housing Authority properties, and will we inform them of the water issue?
Oh, gosh. I haven't thought about it. How's the city notifying?
I've got four already today.
Well, Andy, the water advisory is for individuals under the age of six or with compromised immune systems.
Okay.
Which we may have some inside of our properties, so it would be nice to let them know just if they have visitors over or what have you as well.
Absolutely. We will.
Whether we posted in lobbies or...
On-site staff can post notices.
Yep.
I don't know if there was a distribution we had for all tenants or anything. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Thank you. Great job explaining that to not only Commissioner Anderson, but all of us.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other business, this meeting of the City of Salem Housing Authority is closed. Called order, the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem. Please call the roll.
Board Member Kaser.
Present.
Board Member Anderson.
Also.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoyd.
Here.
Board Member Osick.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook is absent, so Guest Counselor Dixon-McDonald. Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett is absent.
Okay. Move to public comment. See if we've got anybody signed up. Nobody signed up. Does anybody here want to address the Urban Renewal Agency? Seeing none, we'll move along to the consent calendar. Member Nanki.
Yes, I would move the consent calendar as provided.
Second.
Moved by Member Nanki, seconded by Member Hoy to approve this consent calendar. Any discussion?
Just, we have the minutes of the April 9th meeting and then a resolution, a supplemental budget for the Salem Convention Center Fund, increasing expenditure appropriation authority and revenues in the amount of $350,000.
There you go. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Information reports? Got anything to tell us, Andy? Welcome, by the way. It's a long time we haven't seen you here, so...
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Thank you. The one thing I would highlight for you is the fact that we are going to be starting construction on Portland Road of some streetscape improvements. Those will continue through the end of the year, and they include three pedestrian crosswalks as well as a number of some traffic interconnect work at our signals, as well as new sidewalks, street trees, and streetlights. So, we issued a press release on that last week, but we are excited to begin that work. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other business to become before us? Because that's about it. Seeing none, I call this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency adjourned. Great job, Andy. We'll tell Kristen you filled in adverb. Call this meeting of the City Council of State of City of Salem to order. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaser.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoyd.
Here.
Counselor Osick.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook is absent. Mr. Dixon-McDonald serving as guest counselor. Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett is absent.
Okay. Counselor Nanki, approval of additions and deletions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move additions as included on your yellow sheet in regards... Well, I'll leave it at that, and then discuss it after.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Hoy to approve the additions to the agenda to your motion.
Yes. We have revised Exhibits B and C on the amending the Lone Oak Reimbursement District, and then we removed the public hearing on the appeal for the property located at 6719 Devon Avenue.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor made by Counselor Nanki. It's seconded by Counselor Hoy to approve the additions to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council comments? Well, first, let's go. City Manager Powers, we want to bring Peter Fernandez up to talk about the water issue here, or do you want to handle it?
If Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, could update councilors on information that was provided to the public this evening, follow-up from algae bloom that we've been monitoring since last week. We'd like to update council and the public on the information that was released this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Council President and Counselors, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. We have put out an advisory for children under six and vulnerable populations to not drink our water. The algae bloom that we've been following at Detroit Reservoir has released toxins that we now have detected in the water system. I have with me Lacey Gores-Preece, who is our Water Quality Manager, that can give you a more detailed update. The water is certainly safe for bathing, washing, and for healthy adults to drink, because the toxin level is way below that, but the caution level is for, as I said, for children and people with vulnerable populations, so pregnant women, nursing mothers, people on dialysis, people with compromised immunities, that kind of thing. It is very important that people not boil the water. That will only make matters worse. It will release more toxins, so it is not a boilable situation, and we... If you have your own filter, check with your manufacturer. Some filters are rated for this kind of toxin. Most are not. So, we ask that people just confirm that before they... Just confirm that their filter is... Or think that their filter might be enough. So, Lacey, if you would come up and just... A brief briefing.
Absolutely. As Peter mentioned, my name is Lacey Gores-Preece, and I'm the Water Quality Supervisor for Drinking Water. I wish I was here this evening under different circumstances, but unfortunately, the safety of our water customers is of utmost importance, and that is why this advisory was issued today. In consultation with the Oregon Health Authority and the EPA, we had good discussions today about making sure that we are doing our best to protect public health, and that really is the purpose of this advisory. As Peter mentioned, it is only for vulnerable populations, and those would be infants, children under six, pregnant women, nursing mothers, those with pre-existing liver conditions, those receiving dialysis treatment, the elderly, and any other sensitive population. The advisory was issued today based on the presence of cyanotoxins within our water distribution system. This advisory does affect our three wholesale customers, so Suburban East Salem Water, City of Turner, and Orchard Heights Water Association also fall under this advisory and public notification. We've had staff that have been out sampling. They were out sampling for toxins on Sunday, on Monday, today, and will continue to sample daily until we get confirmation that toxins are no longer present within the water distribution system. We will continue... We will start getting those results in on Thursday, and we will reconvene on Thursday to see what those levels look like, and we will provide updated information based on those results. At this time, I have... If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, and thanks for the report, and thanks to you and the rest of your department for your prompt action in notifying people and taking action. Do you have any idea how long this is going to last? That's my first question, and I'll ask a compound question and say, isn't this algae bloom, is that related to... I thought that more likely happened in the summer than not, so is this a precursor of things to come?
So, the answer to your first question is we do not know how long this advisory will last. This is an evolving situation. We hope that the results come back on Thursday and indicate that these toxins have moved through the system and are no longer there. So, that's best-case scenario. We will do our best to continue to monitor and look at all areas within the North Sandiam Watershed and at our water treatment facility and within the distribution system. We typically do see a bloom in May. That's not uncommon. These are natural systems, so we are looking at the type of cyanobacteria that are present, how much are up there. Not all blooms produce toxins, so just because you have a large bloom doesn't mean you're going to have toxin production. You could have a small bloom, and you could have very elevated levels of toxins. So, this is a very... This is an emerging contaminant issue, and so we are doing our best to understand it. We're doing our best to evaluate what happens in our own watershed and then look at the effectiveness of our water treatment facility at removing these when it does occur. So, we've been paying attention. The bloom actually started May 8th is when we started monitoring the situation, and we had good results for many days following that. The situation changes and evolves, so we'll keep you posted and the public posted as we learn more about the results.
Counselor Nanki, then Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions. One, when... At what point did the water exceed those limits for vulnerable populations? If people store water in their refrigerator...
Sure.
Like I do, should they dispose of said based on when they might have placed that?
Sure, absolutely. So, as I mentioned earlier, cyanotoxins are kind of an emerging topic, and so they're not regulated like a normal drinking water contaminant under the Safe Drinking Water Act. So, there are actually health advisories that are in place for these, and this is a fairly new thing that was established by the EPA. So, these are actually a 10-day health advisory for both of these particular toxins that we're seeing, which are microcystin and salindospermopsin. So, what that means is the levels that are established are both adult safe level and then also a child under the age of six or a vulnerable population level. What we saw was levels that were above that for the vulnerable population but below for the adult, and we got that data late last week. But the EPA rule for health advisories actually allows you this timeframe to adjust your treatment, and they also know that it takes two to three days to get your results back once you collect those samples. So, the samples were collected late last week. We received notification of the results on Saturday, and we've been in consultation with the Oregon Health Authority related to those and also making adjustments at our water treatment facility to help mitigate for the presence of those through the last couple of days.
So, we're shipping those overnight to, what was it, Florida or Ohio?
We're a little delayed because of the holiday weekend, right? So, we collected samples. So, the samples that we collected Sunday and Monday, we had to hold till today because we had to get them out today. That was the first opportunity to ship those out. So, the Thursday results that we get back will be results from Sunday sampling, Monday sampling, today sampling, and then we should start to see a continuing stream of data come in following that.
I got one last. Last week, I think it was, the email we received where we were actually notified, we were just doing a bottom or lower regulating outlet discharge. Did they actually then start releasing surface water for temperature control?
So, that is supposed to begin on Friday. The manager has signed a letter requesting that they postpone dumping. This is about the Detroit Dam. The Army Corps of Engineers can release water at different points throughout the dam. Algae is present at top where it's warmer. The lower releases, which is where they're doing today, the water is cooler, and in theory, there are less toxins on there. In consultations with the Corps and with the Oregon Health Authority, it was suggested that we send a letter requesting that they not release water from the top, and that letter was delivered to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers this afternoon.
Excellent.
We'll see what they do.
All right. Thanks.
Counselor Lewis?
Just one question. The idea that you don't want to boil your water is kind of of interest. It's my understanding that this is only a problem if you drink the water, but I just want to make sure that washing your dishes in hot water, even using a dishwater, doesn't increase any sensitivity or anything.
Correct. Yeah. The advisory is related to consuming the water, so all other activities are considered to be okay.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have we reached the peak of the problem yet? Do we know? Could this potentially be a more widespread advisory at some point?
We don't know. I would like to say that we've hit the peak and we're on the downhill trend, but I don't know that. When we're sampling, we're sampling a grab sample, which means we're getting a representative sample at that location at that time, and we're trying to make decisions based off that information. But these are bacteria. They grow, they die off, they produce toxins, the toxins diminish, so it's really hard to definitively say that we are on the downward trend of this. I won't know that until we get some conclusive data that confirms that.
Thank you. Counselor Kaser.
Thank you. I'm assuming we don't have a way to treat this? Is there... I mean, are there ways to treat it that we just don't have available? Do other municipalities deal with this and have options for treating it?
Sure. So, first, I'll speak to the quality of our watershed monitoring program. There are a lot of utilities that do not monitor for cyanotoxins because they're not regulated under the Safe Drinking Water Act to do so. We take providing public health very seriously, and we want to have an understanding of what's happening in our watershed and how effective our specific treatment of slow sand filtration is at removing these. But because we also use biological filtration, you know, we are limited to the availability of like chemical addition or doing certain activities to help alleviate algal issues. So, if you had a conventional treatment facility at our location, it would... The results may be different. You know, there's pros and cons to the types of filtration that we use with slow sand filtration, so...
I got to ask one more.
Sure.
How does this affect people's pets? Dogs, cats? Are they affected?
Yeah, absolutely. I would first recommend, if people have concerns, to contact their local veterinarian to ask the question. I would say it's always better to be cautious than, you know, than not. We would ask that if you have concerns or if you have a small pet with a small body weight, I would say it's advisable that you probably use bottled water for them. But again, I would refer them back to their provider for their animal.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. This is sort of a technical question, but we've got all these reservoirs out there. Well, it's technical to me. It may not be technical to you. We have all these reservoirs out there, and does water come into the reservoirs and go out? Are we draining the reservoirs of the water that doesn't have the sample, doesn't have the high level of toxins? How does that actually work? And to me, it's kind of, this is a comment now, not a question, but the whole issue of what's happening up there at Detroit Lake and, you know, who knows when with the Army Corps draws it down or not? I mean, this is kind of a little precursor of that. We've got some problems with our water, and we have the water now, but we're not going to have the water then, and so I'm just curious about how does it... Does the water that has the toxicity in it move through the reservoirs, or are we bypassing the reservoirs?
It's all interconnected. So, you know, once it's in the distribution system, it's in the distribution system. You know, we were sampling at different locations. You know, we were sampling at different locations, so we're trying to make a determination of, you know, where specifically it's at, but there's no isolation between the reservoirs and the pipes, so it's within the system.
Okay. Any, Counsel Housick.
So, you mentioned not boiling it, and then consuming it. What about cooking? Can, should you be able to cook with the water?
If you're a vulnerable population, I would advise cooking with bottled water as well, just with, just based on the fact that boiling will not remove it and can actually make the condition worse.
Right, and so if it makes it worse, is it such that it might even affect non-vulnerable folks if they cook with it?
That's a great question. I don't specifically know the answer to that, but we can refer back to the Oregon Health Authority to see if they have information on that. I would say, if you have concerns, your best bet is just to go ahead and use bottled water for preparation of food for your family if you have concerns.
And one of the activities I didn't see listed was brushing your teeth, so is that something for the vulnerable population should be concerned about? Is that enough water, you think?
It's really about ingestion, but I would say that if you're very sensitive, again, and, you know, it's all about, you know, the associated risk that you're willing to take, and so I would say that if you have concerns, again, use bottled water for those sorts of activities.
Any other questions? Okay, I have one. So, to make sure I understand, you're taking samples of the water around town?
Yes.
From the actual faucets or wherever?
So, currently, we're taking samples from Detroit Reservoir, the North San Am River, the Garen Island Water Treatment Facility at different locations, our entry point to the water distribution system, and then at four locations around the water distribution system to get an idea of what's in town.
Okay, and so, this is hit in town?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much, very informative, and I feel better knowing someone like you is taking care of this, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yep. Okay, counsel comments? Counsel Lewis?
Yeah, some really comments, kind of an invitation. I think we've already, some of us have already heard about this, but for the viewing audience, there's going to be a West Salem Farmer's Market starting the first Thursday in July and running every Thursday from July through September, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The location is on the Greenway on the south side of Edgewater, between Kingwood and Girth or the Old City Hall and the West Salem Family Clinic. And this is a partnership with the Salem Saturday Market and Edgewater Partners. So, it gives an opportunity for local growers to produce and show their wares. Invite everybody to come out.
Anyone else? I would add one. I had the great fortune to continue. We had 100-day challenge for the youth homeless. That 100 days ended in about mid-April. Well, that group is committed and is continuing on, and I was able to go to a meeting and sit through that with the same group of people who basically helped 93 homeless youth off the streets in 100 days. They're basically taking what they learned and sort of institutionalizing it, if you will. There's going to be a database of the homeless youth, where they are, what the relationship is, so they can track them and make sure everything's going well there. They're going to start a host home, a private host home program for those homeless youth that don't have a place to stay that are in school. The example they gave was a 15-year-old straight A student whose father had passed away and whose mother had addiction problems and had been living with different people through the school year and was, didn't know where she was going to end up during the summer or for the next school year, and basically had an internship here in town for at an accounting firm and another one at a law firm in Portland for the summer, but didn't know what was going to happen during the school year. So, it's issues like that for a 15-year-old girl, you know, that they're trying to deal with. So, very pleased to be part of it, but it's the group that's working on it. They work on it every day, but this has just really energized them. It's really inspiring to see folks that do this as a profession, how really bought into the system and into the cure they are. So, they're in good hands, and I'll keep you updated as this moves along. Okay, city manager. No comments from the city manager, okay? We have a presentation for the Polk County Policing Year in Review, Sheriff Mark Garten. Sheriff, there you are. Welcome.
Hi. Sorry, I'm incognito a little bit, so. Mr. Chair, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity. I just wanted to come and share just a few minutes of some of the things that we've been doing across the river and across the county in terms of service and how we really interact with the public. This last year, 2017, is really the first year we've been full-staffed in a while, and so we've been able to do a lot of public interactions, public events, really just to serve the community that we work in. And so, really, anytime anybody calls, we come and we provide whatever it is that they need or want for us. There's a list of them there in your packet of just some of the different things that we do on a regular basis. In the sheriff's office, I'll just cover some highlights of our jail. So, it's a 195-bed facility. On average, we have anywhere 130-some folks in custody every day, so we're well below capacity. Our bookings from last year, 2016 to 2017, are just up about 3%, so not a huge increase. But it also, I broke down by the different agencies that bring in people to our facility, and then just list them off so you can kind of just get an idea of the volume. We don't typically release folks from our jail unless a judge orders to or if there's bail posted. We have the capacity, but part of that thing, too, is we've actually just received a grant from, from the state for justice reinvestment money, where we're actually going to have intensive drug and alcohol treatment inside our jail, which we've never had before. We have a drug and alcohol counselor, but really, it's not an intensive program, so that'll actually be starting late summer, by the time we get that up and going. We have a lot of issues, as any county does, with alcohol and drug-related issues among the population that we serve. Our length of stay, so a lot of people ask me this sometimes, too. They expect people to stay in our jail for a long period of time. Our average length of stay is 19 days, just across the board. We have some folks that are there longer, but we have a lot that are just in and out based on their court appearances, so a lot of our treatment options are limited based on the average length of stay that folks stay. We're not able to actually get into it, but with the help of the court, they're actually partnering with this program that we're going to do, so it'll be interesting to see how that works out. It looks really positive. Our patrol division within the sheriff's office, I list all the functions that we do. There's a ton of different things, and it's not just policing. A lot of the things, jail, court security, civil process, in addition to providing police services. We have 120 volunteers that help us in our variety of different programs, search and rescue, reserves. We have just a volunteer and policing program that anybody can come and volunteer if they want to help. Those numbers have about, we were at 40 in 2015, so we've really increased those numbers because we really do want the help, but I also see the people that want to come help, and those are the folks that we're looking for. We're always accepting applications for that kind of function. Last year, office-wide, we handled 24,000 incidents across Polk County. I break it down by areas, and West Salem is about a quarter of that number, roughly. It also talks about just the overall number arrests, number of traffic stops that we do across the county. Those are up a lot. We have more staff now, but we're also out, not everybody gets a ticket. That's not, there's no quotas, there's no anything like that. It's really based on the circumstance and the officer's discretion at the time, and about one-third of folks that get stopped get some sort of citation, so it's not as high as some people think. I get that question asked of me often. 911 use is up by about 1,000 compared to the previous year, so just the call load in general across the county is up. There's one section in there, in your packet, that talks about some just different crimes that I've, that have some kind of drug nexus to it. It's not an all-encompassing list, but you look at all the numbers, they're all up. The only one that's down is burglaries to residents. Everything else is up. These all have some kind of drug or alcohol-related nexus, and we have to do something to fight that. We can't be, I just can't accept those numbers. That's not who I am. So, there are some other things, proactive things that we're doing in terms of, in treatment facility and treatment inside our jail is one of those things. So, this is just a snapshot so you can see those numbers. The other program I want to talk about real quick is our Mobile Crisis Response Team. It's a fantastic program, partnership with Salem Police. It is a program that is being used literally every day, more and more, because the people see the use for it and understand that we can come help and help the situation. Doesn't mean somebody goes to jail. That's typically in the past, sometimes where people ended up where they didn't necessarily need to be. And so, this program is fantastic. It covers West Salem, it covers the rest of the county, but between the two teams, between Salem PD and us, we cover the entire county, so it's a great program. I wanted to touch on one thing with our Public Safety Levy that was passed in May of 2015. This will be our fourth year coming up in this budget year for it. Not once have we levied the full amount that was asked, which was up to 45 cents. We, the first year was 31 cents, second was 37 cents, and this, I skipped one, I'm sorry, and 34 cents, and then this upcoming budget year is 32 cents. We've really tried to maximize the dollars. I don't want to just spend money just because we have it. We are using the money for specific things, and it really, the commissioners have really held their end of the bargain when they promised that if we did receive any kind of timber payments or any kind of money from the federal government in lieu of those timber funds that they would apply that, and they have, even a year that we didn't get any, it still wasn't, it was at 37 cents, it wasn't up to 45. So, that levy will expire in May of 2020, or, excuse me, in 2020, and so we'll have to be going out at some point in the near future to re-up that levy. There's no other options that we have, but our fiscal, our fiscal angle on this entire thing is to provide the best service, obviously, with the lowest cost we can, and hopefully I can prove that we're doing that. So, that's really all I have. I just wanted to share information, because a lot of times we don't get that opportunity to share information, and sometimes, sometimes people just don't necessarily always fully understand what law enforcement does. It's different on this side of the river than it is on that side of the river. It is different at times, so I'm open to any questions anybody has about anything.
Any questions? Counsel Hoi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you, Sheriff, for coming and presenting this information and for the great, great work that you're doing for the citizens of Polk County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Anderson.
Sheriff Garten, I echo what Counsel Hoi said. I do have a couple of questions. First one is about the fact that you're pretty fortunate, you've got 195-bed jail, and you've got, on the average, about 60 beds open. I know there are jails, including potentially Marion County Jail, that sometimes people have to be released because they don't have the space. Do you have any kind of intergovernmental agreement with the City of Salem or Marion County or somebody else, other jurisdiction that could use your beds?
Yes, so not with the City of Salem or Marion County. With U.S. Marshal Service, we do have a contract for federal prisoners, not ICE prisoners, but...
People who might be in Sheridan otherwise?
Basically, and so we do house up to, we've had anywhere up to 13 at one time. The contract's up to 20, and they pay per bed, per day, so it does help offset some of the costs.
Yeah, good, thank you. And I can't help myself, I look at your average daily population is 132, the average daily male population is 105, the average daily female population is 33. I had 105, and 33, I got 138.
There might be a percentage, like a point, something that helps offset that.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions to the sheriff? Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We appreciate the information. Go to public comment on agenda items. Roz Sheerak, followed by Jacque Hevery.
Thank you. I'm Roz Sheerak, and I'm here tonight representing SCAN Neighborhood Association, and I'm speaking to Consent Calendar Item 3.3D. SCAN supports the staff recommendation to remove Church Street southeast between Mission Street and the south end of Pringle Creek Bridge from the adopted Capitol Mall parking technology project and cease the planned installation of the parking meters on that strip of Church Street. By removing Church Street from the paid parking plan, this would allow a previous request by Salem Hospital to go forward. Over a year ago, in February 2017, Salem Hospital sent a written request to public work staff requesting a three-hour limit on parking for this same stretch of Church Street that's, you know, the subject of this item. They also sent that request to SCAN, asking for SCAN support. Then, in March, at March 8th, SCAN meeting, the board did unanimously support that hospital request, and we sent that action to staff, letting them know that, because about the same time, we were hearing a lot of concerns from the neighbors there on Church Street, the residents who are on the west side of Church Street, right across the street from the hospital, were also asking for about a three, excuse me, three-hour parking limit. At that time, paid parking wasn't being talked about, and so it was assumed the status quo free parking, but with a three-hour limit, that's what everybody was wanting to see, the hospital, the residents, and SCAN supported that. So, we feel by removing this stretch of Church Street between Mission and the Pringle Creek Bridge, that would allow the hospital's previous request to go forward, and this is noted in the staff recommendation also, where it notes that CATSIC could hold the hearing on that request, which is the normal procedure. And then, the outcome, I think we're all looking for, is continuation of the current free parking but with a three-hour parking limit. So, SCAN is asking the council to support that staff recommendation to remove that stretch of Church Street from the Capitol Mall paid parking plan and cease the planned installation of the pay stations on that stretch. It's about a two-block stretch of Church Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Roz. Any questions? Thank you for coming down. Jacque Hevery?
Jackie.
No, Jackie, I'm sorry.
A.K.
It was not an IE in my defense.
I know. So, my name is Jackie Heady of Board Two, and my neighbors and I just wanted to thank the city council, Counselor Anderson in particular, city staff, and the Public Works Director, Peter Fernandez, for revisiting the parking plan on the 600, 700 block of Church Street southeast. As quickly as the neighbors responded to the news that our neighborhood was surprisingly part of the expanded Capitol Mall parking district, city staff was just as quick to hear the concerns about safety, the pressure on residential parking, the concerns for parkgoers, and they immediately moved to change the situation. So, thank you so much for the openness and the efficiency. My neighbors and I are here just to support the recommendation from city staff, Counselor Anderson, and Salem Hospital to remove Church Street southeast between Mission Street southeast and the Pringle Creek Bridge from that Capitol Mall parking technology project while implementing the three-hour time restriction on the east side of Church Street, just as Roz mentioned. As you all know, this is a very small section of Church Street. We are not part of the hospital. We are not part of the Capitol Mall. We are a distinct historic residential neighborhood that wants to maintain its sense of place and livability. And in the final days of Historic Preservation Month for Salem, these are the concrete decisions that matter so much, so thank you.
Any questions for Jackie? Thank you, Jackie. Making up for my errors there. Denise Bowles, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and members of the council. I'm here, my name is Denise Bowles. I'm here representing Salem Health, and as you heard from our neighbors, that we also support the staff recommendation to remove the second... we also support the staff recommendation to remove the section of Church Street from the Capitol Mall District. I think it will allow us to work together as a neighborhood to resolve issues that are unique to that community, that are very different than the situations that address the areas around the Capitol Mall. So, I'm just here to lend my support, and thank you for our time.
Thank you, Denise. And finally, Carol Unruh.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Carol Unruh, and I'm the owner of Oregon Beverage Services. And I'm here today to reiterate my support for revision in the city code to allow spirits to be sold in city parks for permitted events. Oregon Beverage Services currently provides and manages contracted alcoholic beverage services to fairs and festivals throughout Oregon and Washington, including the Portland Rose Festival at Tom McCall Waterfront Park, where we have just come off of four-day, off of four successful days without incident. At each and every one of these events, our main priority is to ensure a safe and positive fan experience. And part of that positive fan experience comes in the ability of the patrons to choose what they drink and that they'd like to consume at our events. We have found that the current customer base is looking for greater variety in their beverage choices, and we currently see this in the proliferation of the varieties of beer styles, the tasting flights of wine, and the popularity of spirits and mixed drinks. The most important component of alcohol service is the responsible sale and dispensing of alcohol. This responsibility falls squarely on the licensee. This responsibility includes having the proper licensing, training for all employees, onsite security, and alcohol monitors to ensure guest safety, as well as prevent service to minors. Our responsibilities stay the same, no matter the type of drink we are serving, be it beer, wine, or spirits in a mixed drink. In essence, a drink is a drink is a drink. This is in line with the codes and regulations of the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, which states that the equivalent serving sizes for each type of alcoholic beverages are a 12-ounce pour of beer, a 5-ounce pour of wine, and 1.25 ounces of spirits. Oregon Beverage Services works with organizations that benefit the community, and the increased revenues generated from the events that we serve allow those organizations to do more positive work within their communities. In summary, changing this city code and allowing the sale of spirits in a licensed and responsible manner will only enhance the fan experience and benefit our clients by enhancing their events. We urge your support.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Nope. Thank you for coming down. That is it for public comment? That is it for public comment? Moving along to the consent calendar, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar with following polls. 3.3D by Counselor Anderson, and 3.3E needs to be pulled for Counselor Kazer.
Need a second?
Second.
Moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Hoy to approve the consent calendar. Counselor Kazer.
Thanks. I'd just like to register a no vote on 3.2C.
Okay. Counselor Anderson.
In keeping with my vote at the last meeting, I register a no to-
On 3.2C?
Same one.
Okay. To the motion?
Yeah, the balance of the consent calendar includes a couple of financial resolutions, transferring appropriation of authority in the city's trust fund to the telephone system replacement trust fund, and transfer appropriation authority in the general fund for city hall waterline replacement. Then, we have the item that was just, had the no votes registered against it, and mending the Lone Oak Road reimbursement district, an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County for communication and dispatch services for the St. Paul Rodeo, an application for project funding under the Oregon Department of Transportation, All Roads Transportation Safety Program, and an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Transportation for use of microwave radio bandwidth to establish microwave link between Willamette Valley Communications Center and the 911 Backup Center. And I think we have one, no, and that would be it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the polls for 3.3D and 3.3E, and no votes registered by Counselors Kazer and Anderson on 3.2C. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So, we now go to, special words of business, that's right. So, now, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Council President and Acting Mayor. I move that the council adopt a staff recommendation to remove both sides of Church Street Southeast between Mission Street Southeast and the south end of Pringle Creek Bridge from the adopted Capitol Mall parking technology project and cease the planned installation of the parking meters in that area.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Anderson and seconded by Counselor Hoy to approve the staff recommendation on 3.3D. Counselor Anders?
Thank you. I think that Jackie Heavy and Denise Bowles and Roz Sheerak, thank you. I was looking that way, and I knew there was somebody else, and there's Roz. They spoke quite well of this thing. I'd like to say a few things. First of all, I think we also should thank the urban development department. That also, it's sort of a strange mix we have here. Public Works is traffic, urban development is parking, and at least in that area. And thanks to both those departments. Then, I think a further thank goes to Kevin Hotman, who's here in the room today, who's the traffic engineer, who was very responsive to the neighbors. And we had a very interesting meeting in one of the neighbors' houses, and I thank Kevin for his work. I also have to say that this, to me, is an instance of cooperation between the neighbors and the neighborhood group and the hospital. And that has not always been the case, and I'm pleased and proud to say that it's the case now. And I'm glad that we, the neighbors could work together with the hospital to produce a positive report. I also say that the rest of Gayety Hill Historic District, which quite rightfully, very zealously protects its little enclave there, right off of the main drags of the city and right by some, the hospital and the university and other areas, it's fitting that they do this. And the rest of Gayety Hill is pretty much protected from the parking technology, because it is already, it already has the same protections that is being given to Church Street. That is residential parking permits and limited parking otherwise. So, I think this is a terrific example of neighborhood and city cooperation, and I urge that we pass it.
Okay. Any other discussion? So, we have the motion on the, motion on the floor to approve item 3.3D staff recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Kazer?
Thank you. I move that council reject the appellant's May 21 objection letter regarding council's deliberations and adopt the order approving the application.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Kazer and seconded by Counselor Anderson. Want to say that again?
(laughing)
To reject the objection?
Reject the objection, yes.
Is that basically it?
Basically, and adopt the order.
And adopt the order.
Yeah.
Discussion.
Yeah, so, one point of correction I'd like to make in the appellant's letter is that the letter states that the counselor who asked the question of staff is Counselor Cook. That was incorrect. If you review the video, it's clearly was me asking that question. So, yeah, so I'd just like the appellant to note that. The second part of that is, as far to the procedural matter, when I asked that question, I was trying to get at a question that I understood that evidence when Atchison, you know, told us we couldn't receive new evidence. I was totally fine with that. Personally, I don't think that we can attach a good neighbor agreement onto a land use decision. I don't think that that's the appropriate place to put that. I think that that would be unusual and a little unprecedented to do that. I think that the city perhaps should work with UGM after this is kind of set and over with so that we can begin to work with them on some type of formal partnership to craft something like that. But as far as wrapping that and connecting it to a land use approval, I don't think is appropriate. So, that's why I encourage you to support the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we've got a motion to basically approve the order and reject the objection. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're to information reports. Anybody got any comments, questions on the information reports, which are hearing officer decision, two hearing officer decisions and an appointment to the Center 50 Advisory Commission? Not. We'll go to first readings.
Ordinance bill number 818, an ordinance vacating Vacation Lane Southeast.
Counselor Nanki.
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Hoy to approve the staff recommendation on 7.1A. Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Move to 71.1B.
Ordinance bill number 918, an ordinance relating to possession of alcoholic beverages in parks, amending Salem Revised Code 94.195 and declaring an emergency-
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the proposed changes to Salem Revised Code Chapter 94 to allow sales of alcoholic beverages with 14% or more alcohol by volume at Riverfront Park and Bush's Pasture Park be referred for a public hearing.
Moved by Counselor Hoy, seconded by Counselor Anderson to refer the issue on sale of alcohol with 14% or more by volume at Riverfront and Park and Bush's Pasture Park to a public hearing. To your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not necessarily opposed to this idea at all. In fact, I probably will ultimately support it, but I think that it deserves a full public hearing. I think we need to hear from the residents, hear from people who are, have a vested interest in this proposed change. And I just think that a public hearing on this issue is the best way to go before we make a final decision.
Counselor Anderson.
From the comments that I have seen and heard, it seems to me that there is a lacking of complete understanding of what this really is.
Right.
And so, I don't, I think it behooves us as a council to not only listen to what the people have to say, that, as Counselor Hoy was saying, but also to educate the public as to what this really means. I mean, you know, it seems to me that in, at the far end of the scale, we have somebody carrying an open bottle of liquor, walking down, looking at the art at Bush's, at the art fair. And that's not, that's what it is. And I think it would be very important for us to educate the public as to what we're really talking about here. And so, that's why I think a public hearing would be good.
Counsel Lewis?
I would agree, but I would also ask the staff to bring this back for a public hearing as soon as possible, because I know the intention was to have this done so it could be utilized during the summer months of this year.
Yeah.
Anybody else question? How soon can we get this done?
City Attorney Atchison, any notice requirements? I think as far as the staff work, we get, we, it's, the report that you have is the staff work, so it's more the minimum public notice that would be required, if any.
We could schedule for the next meeting if staff is ready to present.
Okay. So, any other comments? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We go to second readings.
Okay. Ordinance bill number 518, an ordinance granting a franchise to Comcast Oregon One Inc. Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook is absent. Counsel Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett is absent. So, I'll move on to ordinance bill number 618, an ordinance granting a right-of-way use agreement to Mobility LLC for placement of wireless facilities in the public rights of way. Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook's absent. Counsel Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett is absent. And ordinance bill number 718, an ordinance granting a right-of-way use agreement to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for placement of wireless facilities in the public rights of way. Counselor Osick?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook is absent. Counsel Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett's absent.
Has nobody signed up for public comment?
(inaudible).
Yes? Come on up, sir. Okay, tell us your name, what ward you're in, or your address. And you got three minutes? Two minutes, the yellow light comes on. Three minutes, the red light comes on.
It won't take that long.
Okay.
Counselors, my name is Brett Harrison. I've been in South Salem as a resident for three and a half years, moving from California's Bay Area and from Sonoma County. First, we love Salem and the Mid Willamette Valley, finding the only real drawback to our community being the lack of scheduled commercial air service from Salem's McNary Field and the drive to Portland's PDX becoming worse merely every day. Seeing the absence of air service being a major challenge and limiter as our city and the Mid Willamette Valley continue to grow and thrive, I've had the privilege of working with a group of like-minded individuals and organizations over several months to investigate the absence and what can be done to alleviate the situation. To this end, the group has engaged and funded a major research study by Valair Aviation, a nationally recognized consultancy in community air service and development. On Monday, June 11th, the group, co-sponsors and partners, Travel Salem, ZET Core, Salem City Club, and the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce wish to invite you, Salem counselors, and residents of Salem, and the Mid Willamette Valley, to a major event with the community joining at a luncheon dialogue and discussion at the Salem Convention Center with Jack Penning, Valair's managing partner, as he presents the study's findings and case study for scheduled commercial air service returning to McNary Field. Counselors, we look forward to you joining us for this important dialogue and discussion with our city residents and the larger Willamette Valley community. This has, I'm sure, been a bit coming for over a decade since service was lost, and this is a new beginning. And we welcome a dialogue and discussion. Registration is through the partners, Travel Salem, ZET Core, Salem City Club, and the Area Chamber of Commerce. And I'm not really going to prepare to take questions because I'd really like to reserve the presentation to Jack Penning and the opportunity for dialogue and discussion. Thank you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this issue. Anybody else? Hearing none? I call this meeting the city council of the, the city council meeting of Salem adjourned.